If our township manager, Allison Elliott, please call the role.
Sure. Commissioner Armin.
Here.
Commissioner Norris.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Here.
Commissioner Brockington.
Here.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. I think he's here.
Excuse me, I think you skipped somebody.
Getting there. Commissioner Pransky.
Here.
Trying to find everyone in the windows.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld, did you hear the role?
I did. I just got in again. Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone is here tonight.
Okay, I'm going to ask our township solicitor, he has a statement to read. Adiazia.
Yes, thank you Commissioner Norris, and good evening to everyone who is here this evening attending tonight's public meeting to discuss the Sheltonham Township Facility Study. In a few moments, you're going to hear a short presentation from the township manager, Allison Elliott, who's going to review a number of the concept plans that were proposed in the facility study. After Ms. Elliott's presentation this evening, the public's going to have a period of time until about 9:15 this evening to provide public comment on those proposed concepts. Now, as President Norris mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, there's a lot of individuals present tonight and a lot of individuals who we anticipate would like to have their comments heard. The board is encouraged and appreciates everyone's attendance this evening and looks forward to hearing all of the comments that are going to be shared. The board also thanks everyone who, over the last several months, has reached out to the township and submitted feedback, all of which has been received by the township and recently resulted in the development of an FAQ document that's been made available. Now, since there's so many individuals here tonight, it's really important that there be some ground rules for the public comment period just to make sure that the meeting remains productive and orderly. So I'm going to go through what the public comment period will look like so that everyone can plan accordingly. So if you have a comment this evening that you would wish to share, we ask that you raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And when your name is called, you can unmute yourself. We ask that you state your name and where you live in the township. Now, you don't have to state your exact address or anything like that, but just stating generally where you live in the township. So Glenside, or Windcoat, or Elkins Park is certainly sufficient to satisfy that requirement. You can then proceed to provide your comment. Initially, individuals are going to have one opportunity to provide comment for three minutes. And again, this time limit is not meant to cut anyone off, but we have over 100 individuals here this evening, and the board really wants to hear from as many people as possible. And again, we anticipate that there's many people who are going to want to be heard. Megan Hart, who is here, she works for the township and she's going to be monitoring the three-minute time limit. She will be giving speakers a 15-second reminder when they have 15 seconds left to speak. Now, at the end, if everyone has spoken that wishes to speak, and there are people who want to be heard a second time, the board may open it up for individuals to have a second opportunity to speak, but as an initial matter, we want everybody to have a chance to be heard at least once. Now, after you finish speaking, or your time runs out, we ask that you then mute yourself and continue viewing the meeting. The board's going to hear all of the public comments successively without any interruptions. So what I mean by that is if there's questions posed, or suggestions, or comments are directed to the board, or staff, or the consultants, they're not going to be answered during the comment period. And that's to just make sure that we go orderly through the list of individuals who want to speak in a structured way. Once everybody has had an opportunity to talk, the public comment period will be closed for the remainder of the meeting. So again, if you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, make sure that you use the opportunity during the public comment period to raise your hand and speak. Once the public comment period is closed, board members are then going to have a discussion, and that discussion will likely include questions being posed to staff or to consultants, many of which will likely be questions that were raised during that public comment section. The board may or may not take action this evening on any of the concept plans that were discussed. And if future meetings or additional meetings are determined to be necessary by the board, they'll certainly be advertised and publicized to the community in the future. One last thing before I wrap up here and we move on with the next portion of the meeting. All of you will notice that there is likely a chat feature associated with the Zoom this evening. I actually don't see it on my screen right now, but to the extent that there is a chat enabled, please just know that that's not being actively monitored this evening. And so if you wish to officially register comment, please don't put it in the chat and raise your hand and provide it during the comment period instead. That's the way to officially register your comment. So I'll wrap up just by saying that I know the board very much appreciates everyone's attendance and cooperation this evening. And I know everyone is looking forward to an informative and a productive session. Thank you for that. And with that, I will pass the meeting back to the township manager, Allison Elliott. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out tonight. It's really great to see a lot of people out here to learn about the concepts and share your thoughts on how we can move forward with this project. I am going to share my screen, so just hold on just a minute. Somebody else is sharing. There we go.
Allison, can we ask whoever thinks that they have the right to use this as a promotional forum to remove the CTRO thing, or else remove them from the Zoom session, please?
Okay. I cannot see everyone's screen, so I apologize. I'm going to leave monitoring to other staff members. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Excellent. Okay, great. Thank you. So again, welcome. This is going to be a kind of a quick overview of everything, of kind of the key concepts, just to refresh everyone's memory and introduce some of the concepts that were discussed at our budget meeting and just summarize kind of the reasonings behind where we are tonight with the recommendations. This is not going to be a comprehensive conversation of everything that has gone into these recommendations this evening. Just specifically in the interest of time, everything that we have been doing is posted on our website, which is listed on this front screen. And any questions or comments are still being received at our facilities@sheltonhampa.gov email address. So tonight, we're going to talk about the four options that are proposed and the cost estimates, just a quick overview of them. Oh, I'm sharing my presentation. Thank you. Hold on, let's see. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so, and then the impact of the costs on the township's taxes. And we're going to talk about kind of the worst-case scenario so that you know what we can expect. Hopefully, we can do a lot better than that as we drill down into these scenarios. And then talk about the pros and cons of kind of the big issues, which are the consolidation versus improving the status quo options. Okay, so we'll talk about the summary of the proposed options and cost estimates. So we have option A, which includes the...
Excuse me, Allison, this is Matt. We're not tracking any changes on your PowerPoint presentation. You're still on the first page.
Let me go to share screen. Thank you. Try that. Better? No?
Yes.
That's better? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Keep moving it along.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we have option A, which is the municipal campus located at the Briar site where it is currently. This is improving the police station, the municipal building, and the EMS location. Also, this includes putting a centralized or consolidated community campus at Wall Park, which would include a library, or an outdoor pool complex, gymnasium, community center functions, in addition to some outdoor recreation options. The cost estimate for this item would be about $66 million to about $90 million. And as we've shown in this, there would be a soccer field location that would relocation that would be included as additional cost. Let's see here. There we go. Option B would be utilizing the Tyler site and the John Russell park along Penrose Avenue. A municipal campus would be located on the John Russell park site, which would include an administrative facility, police offices, EMS and fire, and a public works facility. While the Tyler site would include the community center campus, including gymnasium, indoor/outdoor pool complex, and library, and some field and recreation spaces as well. This cost would be approximately $75 million to $96 million with an additional cost of property acquisition, which would be to be determined. Option C is a little bit of a hybrid option, including using the existing municipal campus site following the administrative campus offered in option A and the community campus at the Tyler site from option B. This would be a bit of a reduction in cost from $70.5 million to $92.9 million. And there would still be some costs for acquisition that would be added to that cost. And then, option D is we consider kind of upgrading our existing facilities, which would be looking at the municipal campus at the Briar site and looking at renovations and improvements to the Roland and Lamont Community Center, the libraries at Elkins Park in Glenside, and upgrading the pools at Glenside and Conklin. This would be a lower-cost option of $50 million to $67 million. However, due to the conditions of the Roland and Lamont Community Centers, it would require a reduction of space, so there would be some reduction in programmatic needs at our community centers. This is a summary of these options. What was not added in to the above is the cost of the public works facilities and then community satellite improvements. Should they be added into options A, B, or C? And this shows the total estimated cost for all of that work, anywhere ranging from $65 to $90 million for option D, all the way up to $108 million to $133 million in option B. Again, this does not include anything with respect to acquisition of property or any of the costs associated with that. The other thing is, we do have other properties, such as the shovel shop and the art center and Glenside Hall that were considered and evaluated due to the condition of these facilities and the costs that would be associated with them. It was recommended that the art center and the shovel shop be divested or sold, and Glenside Hall be demolished and added back into the recreation space of Renninger Park. And again, noting that there would be a reduction in some programmatic needs with the option D. Option A, B, and C allow the township to be able to expand services and create modern spacious facilities. Okay, so I know a lot of people have been asking how would this affect the township's taxes, which are, you know, a very important part of how we generate our revenue. Some of the things that we would be looking at for this is we reached out to our financial advisors, PFM, who completed our strategic financial management plan in 2020 and asked them to help us with generating costs for raising funds through bond issues and what that would look like. So they took a look at our proposals and provided us with some bond rates and some estimates for debt that we would generate to pay for these. So we looked at kind of what it would take to look at kind of the low-end cost and then the higher-end cost. So option D, the low-end cost would be renovating the new municipal campus, renovating the existing community centers with smaller square footage, and as well as the standalone libraries at Elkins Park in Glenside, rebuilding the pools, and building a new public works facility. The option A, B, and C, no matter where they're located, roughly in the $98 to $135 million price range would include the new municipal campus at Briar or Tyler, a new centralized community campus, a new public works facility, and then select improvements at Roland, Lamont, and Glenside Neighborhood Centers. We also, what is not included in these costs of what we would need to raise in order to pay for this is reductions in those overall costs, which we would be able to use by divesting ourselves of the various assets that we have to help reduce that and put that in so that we can pay for them without going into debt. So selling the shovel shop, the art center, and the public works facility would help us reduce that debt in option D. And then same for option A, B, and C. But we'd also be able to add the Elkins Park library to that divestment. Okay, so one of the plans that PFM suggested is that we wouldn't need to be able to borrow all of that money upfront. We would be able to phase the improvements over multiple years. So based on the types of improvements in the staging, they recommended breaking down the borrowings over several years. And these are kind of the schemes based on the cost of these improvements that they recommended. Starting in '25, at the earliest, we could borrow $15 million to start with improvements to the community campuses. So that would be spreading that cost over about three years, and then the administrative campus in '28, '29. So that would be able to enable us to raise $71.8 million based on these estimates from PFM. And we'd be able to amortize that over a 30-year period. Each additional borrowing would add approximately $1 million in debt payments per year onto what the township is currently has for its debt payments. And again, this doesn't... This would also, at the kind of the largest debt payment, because as you're making your payments, they kind of slowly raise that debt payment over time and then kind of phase it back out. The debt payment would maximize at about $5 million a year for 19 out of the 30 years. So it kind of ramp up from $1 million up to five and then back down to zero. So we would be able to pay this debt off by 2059. It would limit our borrowing for other needs, such as trails or bridges or anything like that. But according to PFM, we do have additional capacity, if necessary, to borrow according to their standards and requirements for Moody's. If we were to look at the additional payment, additional costs of renovating or rebuilding public works facility and going into the neighborhood centers, again, we kind of looked at, you know, the original, the first $71 million is kind of would be able to cover the cost of kind of the option D, and then the first phases of option A, B, and C. And then adding in the public works and the neighborhood centers would bring us up to a potential borrowing of about $105 million. And if we just stopped at the public works facility improvements, that would require an additional $15 million, which again would add about $1 million in debt payments, bringing the maximum debt payment to about $6 million over about six years and then start phasing out. Then we should add an additional three years of payment onto our debt. If we go as far as adding into the neighborhood centers, it would add about $1 million a year in debt payments and maxing us out about $7 million for about 14 years during that repayment period, which takes us out to 2064. And again, these costs are all kind of in that $23. So one of the things, if you're looking for borrowing money, we try to, you kind of want to take advantage of trying to get everything done all at once so that you maximize the current value of money. Unfortunately, I don't think we can get all this done, so this is why we've been phasing these projects out. This timeline is kind of just suggested based on how we think a good flow for improvements would be. But if we have things like improvements to neighborhood centers or something like that, we can switch the order very easily. Okay, so what does that look like for the township's taxes and tax revenue? So currently, our mileage rate is 9.5695, generating about $18 million from the real estate tax revenue. We are looked at kind of what would it take, worst-case scenario, to try to build this out and kind of make those debt payments? And we built in a 1% tax increase, which is being proposed for this year for '24, and then said, well, what does a 5% increase look like per year over the next nine years after that? And just running those numbers out, with five years of 5% tax increases, it would raise an additional $5.5 million over that period of time, which would be enough to pay off kind of the option D. And/or the first phase is the community center and the administrative campuses for option A through C. If we add another two years' worth of 5% tax increases, that would generate the $7.6 million, which would pay for all of those, that raise that over $7 million worth of tax revenue to pay for that debt service. And again, I like round numbers, so I like 10. So I went out 10 years. That would raise an additional $10 million, which would pay if we had additional things like trails or other bridge projects and things like that to help pay for those. So again, this is a very rough back-of-the-envelope calculation, just to give people an idea of what that would look like and whether or not the township can accommodate that. So the next question is, what does that look like to you, the average taxpayer? So the impact of that 5% increase over nine years, hopefully, which would be way more than the worst-case scenario. We looked at what the average home value is in the township. It's about a $400,000 home, three bed, three bath, 220-square-foot home on a 10,000-square-foot lot, with the average assessed value of $145,000. So they're currently paying about $1,387 in taxes per year to the township. Over that 10-year period, with a 1% increase and 24, 5% increase between '25 and 2033, that average is about $79 additional dollars per year. Over that 10-year period, your taxes would be raised a total of $787. If we stopped after that first level, getting to that $5 million of money that would be raised, it would be about a $400 increase over the six years. If we stopped at the next tier, it would be about a $683 increase over nine years. Okay, so how did we get here? That's the question. I know a lot of people thought when we were looking at our facilities and what to do to improve them, it seemed to be an issue of how can we get the heaters back into the buildings and up and running? This is a really important process for the township, trying to figure out how do we really do what is fiscally responsible for the township, provide services to the township and the residents, to serve all the needs for the township? So where did this consolidation concept come from? In 2020, the township hired PFM to perform a financial management report, taking a look at the township's finances and helping it formulate a plan to improve its financial outlook. And one of the things that it came out with was that the township had way more facilities that it can afford to keep, and they all required significant capital investment. And this report recommended consolidation and divesting facilities for the township's long-term future health. The township's library strategic plan also proposed consolidating four of the libraries into one main library with two satellite libraries at each end of the township to help reduce redundancy and increase its ability to serve the community. This facilities report that we hired our consulting architects to help us work through also recommended consolidating the facilities to help improve efficiency, operating improvements, and help minimize the impact of the township while township's operations are under construction and improve those operations once they're back up and running. And then the township also has a sustainability plan and has signed on to the Ready for 100 initiative to help improve energy efficiency for the township facilities so they can operate more efficiently. The new construction of all these facilities will enable the township to implement more modern, energy-efficient opportunities into these facilities than retrofitting a lot of these older buildings. One of the challenges that we have is the cost to replace all of these mechanicals and things like that and really to make sure that they operate as energy-efficiently as possible due to the old structures that they're in. So if you look at this from a very purely financial perspective, this is a huge investment in the township. And as you know, as I showed earlier in the slides, that the investment is large. It will likely require tax increases. So we looked at it from that perspective, and consolidating all the community facilities into one location, divesting all the neighborhood-level facilities is the most cost-effective solution. I'm not saying it is the answer, but if you look at it from a purely financial perspective, it is the answer. So it is the best answer for the township. So that is why we looked at this. And we would be remiss if we didn't look at these options and try to provide as many options and opportunities as possible moving forward for our commissioners and the township to take a look at and really consider as we move forward. This is kind of my very last bullet point, is it's a really important and once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to look at these issues and really try to roll up our sleeves and kind of understand what the best option is. The neighborhood facilities, one of the concerns we have is that they're very small and they have limited opportunities for expansion based on the constraints of the sites and the facilities that they are. So improving the programming would be very difficult. So a new facility would be able to offer those opportunities to expand service to the community and modernize those so that we can be competitive in attracting and retaining residents to the township against our other communities. Again, like I said, we do have a high tax burden on our residents, and we want to make sure that we are going to have to spend this money that we are providing those opportunities that will be beneficial to the township moving forward. One of the interesting things about the consolidation option is that it allows for the grouping of multiple municipal services onto one campus. So it allows a parent or grandparent to go drop their... Drop their kids or grandchildren off and to a library to, um. To play basketball or dance class or be tutored. And they can do other things as well. Instead of having to go home. They can go to the library. They can go swim laps in the pool or other things. So it kind of allows for that one stop shop. For township recreation. Um, I know one of the, the challenges for many parents is they have to go. Four different places sometimes after work to, or after school to, uh. To, to, for all the interests of their kids. Um, the pools are also a significant capital in, uh, investment, um, for. Ninety, roughly ninety days a year. Um, so. One of the reasons why we're proposing an indoor and outdoor pool complex is it, it helps allow the, um. Pools to operate more cost effectively by having them an indoor and an outdoor pool right next to each other. They can share. Mechanicals and, and, um, structures. So it would make it easier, excuse me, for them to operate and maintain, sharing staff. Um, some of the challenges that we have is, uh, as we, as we know, this, this past year, we've had a lot, we had some. Significant difficulty in opening the facility, where if we have one pool that is operating all year round, we'll be able to provide that service. We'll be able to train our lifeguards, we'll be able to have, um. Full permanent staff that will be able to help train other staff. Um, we'll be able to offer more services. Um, and also, you know, things like opportunities such as lap swim, senior programming and things like that throughout the entire year. So, um, and that pool will be able to generate, uh, additional revenue to help support itself. Uh, and help pay off that capital investment that a. Pool or one or two pools that only operate ninety days a year would be very difficult to do. Um, so those are a lot of the reasons, um, why, um, we think this is a. Uh, an opportunity that we should explore as opposed to kind of sticking with our status quo. Um, so for consideration. Um, here's some examples, just of, of some other municipalities. This has been a trend. Uh, throughout, uh, a lot of municipalities in Pennsylvania and across the. The, um, the country is you can see there would be kind of what an indoor pool would look like. Uh, larger cleaner meeting spaces, large gym space that we would be able to kind of have multiple uses. Um, throughout rather than kind of half gyms that we have right now. Um, also. A larger single library will allow, um, reduce redundancy and enable more comprehensive. Collections, efficient staffing, flexible spaces and things like that. Okay, um, so pros and cons of continuing on with what we've been doing, um, so. Definitely, uh, pros, there's less expensive upfront costs. Uh, we have neighborhood level community facilities that can serve the immunity, immediate community. Um, and enables portions of the community to walk to the facility. Uh, and contributes to a community field. We know this is very important to this community. Um, and, and that is one of the reasons why that, um, especially some of. Despite staying with the status quo, there are still considerations for continuing these neighborhood community centers. Um, within the township. Some cons with that, with relying solely on this is that, um, especially as our primaries. Will require larger maintenance and operating budget for the consolidated facilities. Um, we will have multiple roofs and HVAC systems and other things to maintain, um. That would be, even though you'd be saving money upfront with respect to capital improvements. It would be much more likely that these would have much more operating costs. So these. It may not save us that tax increase. I mean, I have to be able to stave it off a few more years, but. Those tax increases would be coming to help manage all these facilities. Um, reduces our opportunities for sustainability initiatives. Um, less opportunities for, um, programming and revenue generation, um, than a larger consolidated facility. Um. So that even though there would be larger costs for operating a larger facility, we would be able to program them more fully. And they would be able to be more likely to pay for themselves along the way. Um, and. With the smaller, um, walkable. Uh, centers, they're kind of more likely to be a little bit more isolated and harder for other areas of the community. It was one of the things that we've kind of heard from. While there are people that do go from one end of the township to the other for offerings at a community center, it's very unlikely. And you hear a lot of people saying that's, that area is so far from where I live. I don't usually go there. So it does. Having these smaller facilities does leave. Some of the community either not served or underserved because we can't provide as robust of a, um. Programming option at these smaller facilities as we can at a larger consolidated one. So it's a kind of a little bit of an isolating thing where we see kind of a more larger facility. Hopefully we'll be able to bring more of the community together. Um, again, the, the opportunity for these facilities to be expanded, to be able to provide more comprehensive. Uses is a lot more difficult due to them being landlocked, um, and not being able to offer as much parking. Um, so again, I, I mentioned earlier that these are, these renovations are very short term. And we will find ourselves likely in the same position in probably another twenty, thirty, forty years. So again, this is one of the reasons why we want to look at all the options that we can at this time, um, take advantage of this opportunity. Okay, and this, this slide has been seen before, uh, so it's just kind of looking at, kind of summarizing. As opposed from com- consolidation to, um, the different options in the, in the consolidation. So we have A, B, and C, we. Um, allow, as I mentioned, a broader range of services. One of the reasons why we liked option A. Of them is that it, it is located more in a commercial district. So it has more opportunity for economic impact. It's closer to the, um, future trail connections with the Tuckney Creek Trail. So there's the opportunity for connection, uh, of a greater number of communities through a pedestrian and bicycle network. Um, so I think that's pretty much it. Um, that is it. I know it was a lot of information. I'm sure I'm leaving a lot out and we'll try to. Like to hear your questions, um, and, um. As I said, this, this presentation will be presented, uh, or will be posted on our website by the end of this evening. Um, and you can always email us questions and concerns through the facilities at cheltenhampa.gov.
Thanks, Allison. I just want to quickly add, while it, it may seem that township, uh, staff. Has their preference for an option and the consultants have certainly given, uh, their input and recommendations to us. Um, and, um, many, you may have heard comments from many commissioners. I want to assure everyone, no decision has been made on any option. We are still reviewing all considerations. We're still listening to input. There currently is no decision that has been made, uh, frankly. On, on any of this, on whether we centralize or not centralized, or. Or, uh, on any of the, uh, choices that were presented. Uh, so now I think we need to move to public comment.
Commissioner Nars, it's, uh, around eight twenty at this point. So I think on the agenda, the public comment period.
Yes.
We're gonna run till about nine fifteen. I think we should push that back till.
Yeah, absolutely.
Probably at least, at least nine forty-five, uh, to allow the full amount of time that we envisioned for the comment.
Okay, uh, Rita Polley, you seem to be first.
Hi, first off, uh, thank you all for the hard work. I, I can only imagine how much, how many hours went into all of this. Uh, three quick points. Uh, will you share with us the feedback that you've already gotten from the community? Over the time that you've been soliciting comments. I think that's very important and should be shared. Secondly. I really think disregarding the architectural heritage of the buildings like the shovel shop. And the Cheltenham Center for the Arts, which are some of the oldest architecture in this Commonwealth. If that heritage just discarded by this township, um, that's really, really sad. And my last point is that, um, the township is. Um, undergoing, you know, a severe problem with the water runoff and sewage. In fact, the local watersheds are in the process now of, uh, digging up parking lots at Adath Gethren synagogue. And at Knethus Israel synagogue to return as much, um, covered up, uh, land as possible to. Uh, permeable grounds. They're building swales and planting trees and. Uh, native, um, plants are now in the place of blacktop and with. The possibility of the Gratz property being sold and possibly developed, uh, we're losing more and more permeable ground and. This, uh, plan, these plans, even though it's, they're wonderful, I mean, you're getting rid of, uh, the property at Wall Park. You're getting rid of the property, um, along Penrose Avenue. And I think you'll just be adding tremendously to the problem. That we have with sewage and water runoff. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Emily Stein.
Um, I live in Windco. Um, despite what's been said already this evening, um, I have no doubt the members of this board already know how they intend to proceed. So rather than try to persuade you in favor of one concept or another, I'd like to express my concerns about how any of these concepts are implemented. First, safe pedestrian and bicycle access is absolutely essential. The response in the FAQs that trails may be built in the future is a non-answer. Many of us have watched this township promise improvements over the course of decades without any meaningful process, progress. Take the Glen Side Flood Control Project, for example. Funding for this project has been available since nineteen ninety-six. Yet no township manager or board of commissioners in the past twenty-five years has managed to implement the project. Safe pedestrian and bicycle access to any future township facility needs to be part of the plan. From the beginning and implemented along with the building of the facility. Second, a nod where possible to the historic and architectural roots of this township is not acceptable. This quote from your FAQs is ridiculous. You are proposing the divesting or demolition of two buildings on the National Historic Register. This is also completely unacceptable and disgraceful. You are supposed to be stewards of this township. This includes the future, of course, but also a recognition and understanding of its history. And last, a property maintenance plan for all township facilities new and existing should be made public. The township should also establish a citizens committee so that residents can have a hand in oversight of this crucial aspect of property ownership. One that the township has demonstrated repeatedly, it cannot be trusted to perform on its own.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Joan, Charis State.
Rest day. Thank, thank you, Dan. Um, I couldn't be more sad to hear. The reference to the Cheltenham Art Center being divested with absolutely no. Acceptable level, even any level of discussion about how that space would be replaced. To allow for the rich programming that has existed in this township for so many decades. Um. That really is appalling to me. I won't even get into the historic side of it because other people have referenced that, but it, it, this presentation is heartbreaking. The second thing I wanted to ask is there was reference during the last Zoom meeting to federal money to pay for this. But it seems like we're paying for it completely by taxes, through taxes. Um, no discussion of federal state money, no projection about what might be reasonable. And Dan, you had asked me to make myself available that, to the township staff. I reached out to somebody that I thought could. Really go through the state process at no cost to anyone. I reached out twice and Megan reached out to me. Um, asking for that meeting. I got the commitment from the person who's, you know, has the expertise and a. A really strong history and nothing came of it. So I'm discouraged, very discouraged. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Emily Steinberg.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'll, I'll just, I'll try to be, be, be brief. Um, so Cheltenham Township says it wants to be a livable and walkable community. That prioritizes and cherishes its unique historic character. And I think this is sort of what everyone out here is, is thinking. However, the facility studies sorely misses the mark. On so many issues regarding these very issues. Um. You know, the historic buildings of, um, the Briar House and Glen Side Hall, both on the historic register. Um, people go to Europe to see five hundred year old buildings that are. Maintained and beautiful and people go to see these things. I think no building is too far gone. Look at Linwood Hall, which has recently been bought and is about to be returned. To greatness. So I think I strongly disagree with, um. The recommendation that you just get rid of the buildings and have little historic touches in there. I think that's really not a great idea. Um, I think selling the Roland Shovel House is a big mistake. I agree that it is, it is a, it's a. It's a gem of a building and it is on the historic register. I think moving the pools, um. Is a really bad idea. Uh, again, kids love to go to those pools. They bike ride there. They hang out all day. Why make your parents drive you somewhere where you can actually walk or bike ride? I don't get that. And that is against the sustainability that, and walkability that we're, we're sort of trying to go for here. And one thing that I do agree with. Is I agree with, um, renovating the Glen Side Library because it's a really great mid-century architecture piece. Okay. Thank you. Am I done? Did you just say I just stopped talking?
No, I think there was some interference from someone else.
Oh, okay. I think it would be great to, to renovate the, um, Glen Side Library. It's a great building and it would be nice to have. It, it's just a, it's a great space. So I'm glad to see that that's not gonna be demolished. But I think that the main issue. Is the walkability of our community is really being tested here. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I hope I'm going in some order. I'm going just based on the hands that I see on the screen. Uh, Lubie Cone.
Yeah, uh, my husband, Thomas Borowski, wished to make a statement.
Yes, uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, we are in Glen Side and I just wanted to ask, uh. Since we're, uh, there seems to be no coordination, uh, with the school district as to its projects and we. We know that Cheltenham High School is a nineteen fifty-five year old building. Several years ago, the ballpark estimates for replacing the high school, uh, was a hundred million dollars plus. And I just think that if we're going to be planning large, uh, tax increases and, and multi-year tax increases. That, uh, the school district tax increases have to be coordinated with the township tax increases. Uh, as we drive up Highland Avenue, we see a brand new Abington High School and we know that Cheltenham High School. The building, something is gonna have to be done in, in this timeframe and it, it to, to. To lower the stress on the taxpayers, I think we need some coordination with the school districts as to the. These big projects and their feasibility. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Jessica Way.
Hi, I just wanted to speak about Glen Side Pool for a second. I'm one of the Glen Side Pool Moms over here. And it really is a huge part of our community, so much so that I would rather see more tiny pools go up around the township. Than to consolidate them into one central location. My major concern is that during the summertime, children who are middle school aged. Ride their bikes and walk over to the Glen Side Pool in huge numbers. It's a safe place for children to hang out during the day. And I'm saying that as a single mom who does not have the luxury. Of being able to drive my children every single day for swim team or other things over to a centralized pool. And we have had two children in this township severely injured in car accidents already this year. The kids from this part of the township will bike over to the central area wherever you put it. And they will get hurt. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So whenever we make these plans, we have to consider the way that children move around the township. I'm also concerned that we're removing a wonderful supervised space that offers a beginning opportunity for children to learn to swim. Taking it away and replacing it with a place for people to loiter all night long. My understanding after reading the plan. Is that you want to raise the pool, raise Glen Side Memorial Hall and replace it with picnic tables? And how are we gonna get stuck with teenagers there all night long? Can we think this through a little bit? Please don't damage everything that's wonderful about living in Glen Side. And I don't want to speak out of a place of privilege. I would love to give what we have to every other part of the township. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, M. Broad.
That's me. I'm Mark Brodsky. I'm in Windco. I'm just sort of getting into this whole process at the last minute. So I'm not knowledgeable about these plans other than what I've seen tonight. And my first suggestion to you is when you show these plans, especially to the public, you should label the functions that are going on. People will have a greater understanding of where these functions that are being, being removed from properties that are being divested, where they're ending up in these municipal campus locations. So that's one thing that I would suggest because when I look at it, I just see a bunch of colors. And you know, some rough idea where the cars are accessing the space. And that brings you to another question. Are you doing traffic studies? Because in these centralized campuses, you're going to have a lot more traffic and you're going to have very large parking areas, which are not pleasant. I would really recommend that you maintain the distribution of libraries and pools, as I think everyone is suggesting here. I don't know about the libraries, there's buildings that require maintenance heat, roofing, et cetera, but pools are a different animal. And I think that we really should keep all, keep the distribution of those kinds of assets. Just another question I have. In this discussion, have we talked about the income from the divestiture of the properties in question? Is that in the formula in any way? I didn't see it. Okay, that's true. You're not going to answer. So I'd like somehow to have that question answered. That's all I have to contribute.
Thank you. Emily Waters?
Hi, Emily. I live in Windco. I grew up in Windco and I chose Cheltenham because of the walkability. And this is just really upsetting. I mean, it's clear that there is a method that everyone wants, but I just want to say that the reason a lot of us live here is because we can walk places. I could live anywhere, right? Like I could have moved to Upper Dublin. I've, I use those libraries, but I don't live there because I want to walk places with my children. And I chose Cheltenham because of that. And it's really disturbing to see that it's, you know, that none of that seems to be taken into account until this final presentation where we got the option D. And I think, I'm just saying what everyone else is saying, that this is not why we live in Cheltenham, is to have a centralized place where I have to drive my kids. I walk to the Glen Side Pool every day in the summer. I walk to the library every day in the summer. And I want my kids to do that once they're, can do it on their own. Just like Jessica said, I'm very excited for that. I want them to ride their bikes. And I, as a kid who grew up in Cheltenham, we would have biked anywhere. And the idea of having my kids bike from where I live in Windco on Shelton Hills, on Shelton Hills, is terrifying. And the fact that no one is understanding, it doesn't really seem that the township is understanding that this is why we live in Cheltenham, is so we can get places without walking and without, by walking without driving. So I'm just saying what everyone else is saying, but please take into account why we live here.
Thank you. Hannah Masakaro?
Thank you, Commissioner. Hannah Masakaro, I live in Glen Side. I'm just going to echo what a lot of Glen Side people are saying, that a big reason why we moved here 20 years ago was because we could walk to the pool and the library and the train station. And we really cherish and value those places and that walkability. I was involved with the sustainability plan several years ago. And a big part of that plan, as many people have said, was walkability and reducing our carbon footprint as a township. And I do not think that having people from Cheltenham Village and Glen Side drive to Elkins Park for all of their needs is a very sustainable move. So I also don't think that tearing down old buildings that can be rehabbed is a sustainable move. One other thing I want to mention that I don't think anyone else has mentioned is my son's really into soccer. And the playing field situation in Cheltenham is fairly abysmal. So we pay a lot of money to join club teams in other townships. And we visit a lot of other townships' facilities. And if there is a facilities plan, I would like to see some improvement of soccer fields, baseball fields, definitely basketball courts. I think it's really sad that Roland and Lamont Community Centers have been closed and basketball has not been available to the children there. So this is a plug for Glen Side. Again, we cherish our walkability. And I think it would be doing a huge disservice to this part of the township to close the pool. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce, did you, Brian? I know I messed it up, so I apologize.
So it's actually, it's actually Jibreen.
Did you? Thank you.
And I don't know why our video is not working, but. So we live in Elkins and we moved here about seven years ago. And I'm an artist. And I chose to live in this community and not in Philadelphia for a number of reasons. And one being that there's a thriving arts community here. And I have been involved with the Cheltenham Center for the Arts for many years in different capacities and have used many of the facilities there. And I can tell you personally that there is absolutely no way that you can retain what the center offers by putting it at Roland. It is not possible. And you probably don't realize that because you have never used the facilities. And I understand that you see this as a building that needs a lot of rehab. And I know that myself from having been there. But the idea that you're going to divest the building and you're going to move the center to the far end of the township and, you know, like, I think the plan said it was going to be like an innovation and maker space. Like, give me a break. I'm sorry, but like, that's not what we need. We don't need any more maker spaces. We need, we need to continue to have a space with all the people in this township, including the hundreds of kids across the township who come to camp every year, where they can have a real arts experience. Not, you know, some like, oh, you know, shoved into a little like classroom. Like, they need to be able to take advantage of the kinds of arts, meaningful arts experiences that happen at this center. And I don't see anything in any of these plans that really recognizes that. And that makes me really concerned about why I'm living here in a community where I feel like the artists and the arts are not being properly valued. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Susan? You're still on mute, Susan. Can we come back to her? Yeah, well, okay, let's go to Edie. Susan, we'll come back to you. You're on mute, but go ahead, Edie.
Good evening. Edie Serby, Windco. I'm speaking tonight as President of the Cheltenham Chamber of Citizens. We're choosing to focus tonight on two facets of this process that have been touched on before but need to be reiterated. First is community input. In addition to the survey results, which had some clear messages about the concepts in the facility study and the comments that we submitted to you, you've received hundreds of additional comments from residents. How much has or will the public response influence your decisions? And in the interest of transparency, when will the comments be submitted direct, the comments that were submitted directly to the township be made public? And why aren't those responses being discussed in a public forum? And secondly, the historical legacy of the township. We believe that the township's historical legacy is one of its priceless assets. One of the reasons that the average age of our facilities is 90 years old is because seven of the 16 facilities are historic buildings on the National Register of Historic Places. We feel that the township has a duty to see that these buildings are preserved beyond a nod to their former existence. We believe that the Commissioners should establish and put into motion a dedicated plan to pursue every avenue that will result in the preservation of these buildings. They need to assure that we do not be, that those buildings do not become victims of demolition, either by design or by neglect. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. Susan, are you available? Okay, I'm going to go to Bobby. Bobby Penniman?
Yes, sorry, my camera isn't working. We're focusing so much on the pools and the libraries and so eloquently. I hope that you've heard these voices. I'd like to talk about something that we haven't discussed at all tonight. And that is the move of the police and EMS to the proposed location just off of Cheltenham Avenue. I, I think this is a preposterous idea and would significantly endanger most of our community. I drove over there one day in the afternoon, a weekday, around 2:00 in the afternoon. And I thought, oh, well, traffic would probably be fairly moderate. And I wanted to see what it would be like trying to get out of that facility. And really, there's only two ways for police and EMS to get out of that facility. And one primary way is to go out onto Cheltenham Avenue, two lanes of traffic in each direction with no place for people to go in the, in case an emergency vehicle came out with lights flashing and sirens wailing. It took me about 11 minutes to get from that facility to Washington Lane. And that's, it's less than a mile. The other option would be to egress, going out on very rural, very congested kind of side streets towards Old York Road, streets where their cars were parked on both sides. And really, only one vehicle could, could easily travel on those lanes. Moving emergency services to a facility where the service providers can't get out, it is just unconscionable to me. So I just wanted to bring that up and be sure that that's something that we're considering. And if so, that we do comprehensive traffic studies at different times of the day. The other thing I'd like to very briefly say is I don't understand why this process feels like the bums rush. And when we heard the original proposal, we citizens were given 30 days at a very busy time of the summer to present our concerns and issues. That was extended, but I really feel as though this situation has developed over decades and we're trying to fix it in a matter of weeks. So I'd just like to raise that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. I, I will just comment that you're referring to option B, which is Tyler only. And I'll tell you that that option has the least amount of support. So that's an unlikely selection. Let's go to Pamela Thacker.
Hello. I thank everybody for being here and speaking, you know, against these plans. And I just wanted to ask, I, I did participate in the Cheltenham Citizen Survey and I read the results. And they are overwhelmingly against these proposals, against spending $140 million on, on a complex and against moving forward with plans without gathering requirements first from the actual township. And I think, you know, the real question is, why are we not starting with requirements from what the township citizens want to spend their money on? It's our taxes. And I think there's a really great point brought up today about the high school and why we're not thinking about the investments there that need to happen. Because they will, and doing both of this like also sounds crazy. But if I had $140 million to spend, you know what I would do? I wouldn't knock down every single building that the township loves and uses. I could spend maybe $10 million to repair them and improve them if that's what the township wants. And in 100 years, I wouldn't spend more than $50 million. Like, there is not an actual plan put forward that's including what the township actually wants. You're taking our input and just regurgitating it as a Q and A. And we're not asking for answers. We're asking you to consider what we, what we actually want to spend our tax dollars on, and that's not happening. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Brooke Welsh?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I appreciate everyone being here. Allison, thank you for the presentation that you gave us all on this. I know the Commissioners have been working really hard. I've been following this from even the beginning with the five-year plan and seeing what the architects had come up with over the summer and the various presentations that have been put out leading up to this. And I really understand a lot of the financial concerns that are going on in the township and how to have, how to rectify long-term financial health that was otherwise neglected for many years. And I know that the Commissioners have been doing a lot of work around this, trying to clean up messes. And all of that said, I've lived in this township more than not over the past 45 years of my life. I never went to any of the community pools because I had a pool in my backyard. I never even knew they existed until I was almost an adult. So, you know, I don't have an attachment to those things. I use the library, you know, when I was in high school before the world of computers and having to do research and whatnot. And, you know, I'm, I'm like, I'm a Libyan, a Kindle user. So e- even those things are, are not that important to me, however my community is. And what I'm hearing, and I hope that everyone else is hearing, is not just the care that people have for this township and the quality of our life here, but also the immense amount of creativity that exists. And not just in the artist community that we have and so many people standing up for the Cheltenham Art Center, which again, was a building I've only ever been in once. I live in Windco for people, by the way. I think that there are more creative solutions that are available, not just by the people who are helping to run and maintain our township as wonderfully as you are working and as hard as you are working to do what you're doing here. Because I know it's, it's a huge task. These decisions don't need to be made by a small handful of people, considering the population of the township. There are a lot of people with creative ideas. There are a lot of people with a lot of skills and services that could help us look at things in a new way. And the thing that stood out to me the most around Allison's presentation was being told that a centralized location is something that is trending in other communities. Cheltenham Township is very different than other communities. And we have very unique needs. And to choose something because it's trending in other communities does not feel like a good enough reason why that this is the way to go. I feel like there's some, there's another answer. Thank you, Megan. There's another answer in all of this, and I hope that we're able to find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Mary Russell?
Thank you. Let me start by saying that, first of all, thank you to everybody who's participating, both Commissioners' staff and all of the community residents. I'm going to give a bit of a contrary view, I think, here today. I love Conklin. I go there every summer. I swim laps. I adore Conklin. I didn't let my kids walk there or ride their bikes there because it wasn't safe to do so. I don't think most people in the community can, in fact, walk to the pools and the communities. And more can walk to libraries, but even that, I think there are large parts of the community that can't. And so I think as much, I asked a question about what would it cost to maintain both of the pools? But I wonder what we lose if we have a centralized library, pool, community center. Maybe we gain more. Maybe we should have an open mind that the people who can't now walk to a facility might be able to in the future. And the other thing is that I don't hear people talking about the opportunities that are available for more programming. That are available for more programming. Another thought is, I've heard a lot about neighborhoods, but I haven't heard a lot about the community of Cheltenham as a whole. And that concerns me if we're focusing all of us only on our own individual neighborhood. Again, selfishly, I want Conklin to stay open. But I'm wondering if maybe a central facility is better for the township as a whole. Um, the, and along those lines, I think there's, I wonder how, what percentage of the township has actually been aware of and weighed in on this? I'm not faulting the commissioners. If not, everybody has. There have been lots and lots and lots of notices about this. But um, where I walk, I see lots of plastic bags and people's recycling bins. And I know that we get a thousand no- notices. You can't put plastic bags in the recycling bins. People do it anyway. So I'm not sure how many people are aware of and have weighed in on these plans. And so I think saying nobody wants this is um, is an overstatement at this point. Um, that being said, I do not want to lose the shovel shop or the art center, well, the building the art center is in. I, I don't know that the art center has to be in that building. Um, but I think i- i- it's a treasure to the, to the township. And the last thing is, I really think we need to coordinate with the school district to be, and I'm hopeful that it has been done. I saw on the F A.
Fifteen, Mary.
That, uh, I, I saw that there was one thought that this school district administration building could be located on the central campus. And I think that would be an important improvement. Thank you. I don't know what to do. And I would like us to keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Uh, Eric.
Hi, uh, just real quick. I, I joined late, so I might have missed this. But uh, in the presentation from a few months back about the total cost of all of this, um, there were fourteen total properties to be addressed. The estimate for the, what I call kind of the tear down and rebuild a new option, uh, was a hundred and forty million. So fourteen properties, a hundred and forty million, that comes down to ten million per property. Um, I did some research for other townships that had built pools, outdoor pools, uh, basically from scratch. And they were doing so for two million dollars or less. So the numbers to me weren't adding up. I, I, and again, I might have missed this. But I wanted to know if we ever received an official cost of the uh, the relook, or sorry, the uh, the. Just maintain the current properties. I never saw that in the other presentation. So all I had to go off of was this extremely high number of a hundred and forty million for the fourteen properties to tear them all down and rebuild a new. So I wanted to know that, uh, and I get, it looks like we're not getting questions answered, but that was kind of a big piece to me is. What, what's the estimate for actually just maintaining the, the properties as is?
So Allison, I assume your initial presentation will be posted on the website. Uh, Eric, those numbers were in the township manager's initial presentation this evening.
Okay, all right. Do, can, do you know them off the top of your head, like ballpark? I mean, was it, was it about a hundred and forty million or no?
Uh, no, I don't know them off. I, I don't want to be misleading with any numbers. Take, take a look at the presentation.
Okay, because either way, it seemed to me like half of that, five million per property is a lot of money per property. Um, so I'm, I'm obviously in favor of maintaining the current properties. Uh, looking for outside sourcing for uh, historical building management and whatnot, getting, getting grants from outside. To keep everything where it is. I feel like things are spread across the township in a very good manner now. It's sort of convenient for everybody versus a central location, I was afraid would be convenient for almost nobody except for the people right around there. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, we're going to go to Myers. I'm assuming that's the name and not the school.
Hi there. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Um, we are Glen Side residents and we live in what is called downtown Glen Side. Um, and we purchased here because of the walkability to our neighbor. Who is the library and the pool and um. That I think is very important to most of the community that we have. Um, that we have spaces that are walkable. Um, and the pool is very important, as is the library. In addition, the historical piece, the buildings, um. In our country, all over, you know, all over the world, preserve, preservation and sustainability. Has to be the utmost importance. Um, and es- es- especially buildings on the historic district, um, or, you know, registry. So um, I'm also for maintaining the um, existing buildings. Um, existing locations and um, creating walkability for all of the community. Um, of Cheltenham, um, should all have that opportunity. My husband's here. He may want to say a few words.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Uh, I'm off camera. That's sorry. Um. I had typed into the, to the chat earlier. I just, I don't see where the money's going. I don't, I feel like, what was this? I thank the presenter for giving us that information, but there's a lot of missing dollars. What are the divestment ca- uh, costs? What do we get from those? Um, not that I'm in favor of them. What does it cost to maintain the pools as the previous person, previous speaker had mentioned? If we put ten million dollars into the Glen Side Pool, uh, and the Conklin Pool. Thirty million dollars into renovating the existing spaces, uh. Or even fifty. We're at, we're, we're at seventy million dollars. We're half the cost that we're talking about of making these decentralized renovations. And I just think doing that is the easiest, most cost-effective way to do things to.
Fifteen seconds, Myers.
Thank you. To keep, to keep everything the way it is, where it is and improve it where it is. We need new pools. We need new, we need upgrades, but we can do it for much cheaper than the plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Gail Post.
Hi, uh, Gail Post from Winco. I just, I agree with most of what's been said. Just want to add a few other points. Uh, I think what's really important in what's missing is a discussion. In terms of a conceptualization is what is Cheltenham all about and why are people living here? And we hear different reasons, walkability, sustainability, the historic charm, the sense of community. The diversity, that there are reasons people come here and don't go to more modern communities. It's not just an inner ring suburb, but it is a unique place with, with a sense of history and beauty to it. That is very different. It is not a soulless community like Abington and I, I don't want to offend anyone from Abington. I grew up in Abington. I graduated from Avenue High. So I can say these negative things, but you know, their center of town is Target. You know, it's, it's not like Cheltenham, which is very different. I understand there are a lot of different communities in Cheltenham, but essentially people are here for a reason. And my fear is that in looking at some of the properties that are in, in bad shape. Wanting to tear them down, wanting to divest them overlooks the fact that people are here because of the historic charm. At least most people are. And I would really encourage you to do everything possible to not tear down the buildings, especially those on the historic register. And to not be the, the administration going down in history and the Board of Commissioners going down in history. That destroyed these historic structures. I know you have difficult choices, but I think it's really important to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, Susan?
Thank you for circling back. Um, as a twenty-plus year Glen Side resident and mom of three. I will say that the walkability and accessibility of both the Glen Side Pool and the library. Have been a cornerstone for summers and children's developments, rites of passage. They walk to the pool. We take them to the library. Um, and now they do that on their own. So uh, I would support if had to from any of those plans, option D. But honestly, I, I would say if we can put the money into renovation as opposed to demolition. And centralization is um, based on my opinion and probably most of uh. The neighborhoods and friends that I've spoken to, most popular opinion. So thank you for listening and allowing a public forum on this meeting this evening.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ellen Einhorn.
Hi, sorry. I had walked away for a second. Why don't, I don't know why. Oh, there we are. We're awake. Okay, so um, I have a concern about the fact that we live in a township where we have multiple power outages. And with what's going on with our climate, to me, the libraries, the community centers, they all have. You're not going to tell somebody who's lost power when it's a hundred and five degrees out that they have to get to a centralized location. I just think that's crazy. And I don't know if this has been discussed already and I missed it. But it's a thought I had from the minute I heard about the centralization. And the other thing is that, um, oh, well, I should tell you, I live in Cheltenham since nineteen seventy-six. I too went and graduated from Abington and had a wonderful education. Um, does not feel like what Cheltenham feels like. Even then, I'm seventy now, so it's been a while since high school. But the reality is that we don't have, we have to have local places for people to go. I just think that that's just going to be the reality as we continue to have excessively hot summers. And um, perhaps we're going to have nasty winters. I, not the weather lady, but um. I just, I really don't like the whole idea of centralization. I don't know if I have the concept right in my head that it's supposed to be near the Walgreens, near Church and Old York Road. Or if that's where the skating rink is coming back and the um, facility for storage. But the new traffic light at Church and Old York Road leaves a lot to be desired. If anybody did studies of how many times a day Church Road is backed up to almost New Second Street sometimes. Um, it's, I don't know. I just, I think it's a terrible idea and it really makes me sad. And now I've had the gas company come to the neighborhood and, you know, have to deal with a smelly leak. And, you know, they always say things like, well, you people in Cheltenham, you want your trees. And my answer is, yes, we damn well do. Thank you, gas company. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Ellen. Uh, Laura?
Excuse me. Hi, everyone. Um, my name's Laura Esso. I also am a downtown Glen Side resident. And largely want to just echo what a, a lot of other people have said here, but wanted to make sure I was not just, um. My voice was heard and not just assumed to be agreeing um, by silence. So my husband and I and our three children live in Glen Side. We moved here for, sorry, the, the, oh, God, there we go. Um, a, a really, really hugely significant factor for our choosing not only Cheltenham, but this part of Cheltenham was the walkability. Um, we are, we are pool members. We are swim team members. We are library patrons. And my kids walk and ride their bikes everywhere. Um, so, uh, one of the things that was said was that. The, a- and in a couple of the presentations was just that, you know, this is, this move of centralization is what a lot of other townships are doing. And what somebody else has said is, we are not everybody else. We, um, we're not Abington. We're not Upper Dublin. So what is working for them is not necessarily going to work for us. And um, Cheltenham is a township of neighborhoods that have different characters, different um, needs. And so being sensitive to the unique character of each Cheltenham community within the township. Is important and not taking away from some. Um, and the services are distributed across the township currently. And so I think option D, I was pleased to see that come as part of the discussion today because that seemed to address. Um, some of the things, I, I, I think the centralization and new build of the admin and EMS services, that, that seems like a good move. Um, but leaving the community centers, the libraries, the arts, the pools. Um, and focusing on walkability to those things. Glen Side is very walkable. The Conklin Pool is not as walkable. Connecting um, Glen Side to Wal Park to Conklin. Um, connecting the walkability, the bikeability across the township to the, the existing facilities. Would, I think, better serve and connect the broader community and maintain the character of the unique neighborhoods. That make up Cheltenham and that make us different than our neighbors.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, Sydney Khan? You are mute?
Sorry. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity. Secondly, I don't envy you your role in making this plan come to fruition because it's going to be a really hard job. Uh, we understand, all of us, that township is historic. And as a consequence, it has a great many obsolete facilities which are no longer fit for purpose. And do have to be revamped in one way or another. My, I want to take a slightly different approach to some of the previous speakers and rather focusing on individual activities. And locations, I would like to step back and take a higher level view where we are and why we, where we need to go. First of all, from the perspective of maintenance, the more facilities we have, the more things to maintain. The greatest the number of staff we have to have to maintain, to work in them and maintain them. There's more cost indicators, insurance, utilities, blah, blah, blah. So the running costs of these, of these different opportunities, uh, and options. Must be taken into account down the road. We also have to look at our future plans because we are, we have inherited the deficiencies of people who got before us. And I don't believe we should leave our successors to deal with the same problems twenty, thirty, fifty years down the line. So we are thinking to be forward-looking. And that particular comes down to the track that we are no longer living in the same world of climate and environments. That our predecessors were. We have to build into all of our new facilities. The resilience to deal with what is going to be definitely adverse changes in the, in the environment. Specifically, the climate, rainfall, storms, heating, cooling. All of those things are going to be much, become much more critical in the future. I also, uh, therefore, I believe that from, uh, uh, from an administration perspective. It is desirable to centralize the, the services as much as possible. While leaving uh, satellite services in the communities to provide those things that are particularly local. Like libraries and pools, which I'm not going to address. Um, the other thing about this is that um, I have not seen, looking at the proposal. Uh, any discussion of opportunities for funding beyond tax increases, for example. What are the opportunities for, under say, for example, the IRA and the Build It Back Better and those other federal is, uh, initiatives? Plus whatever Montgomery County. Sorry?
Go ahead, keep finishing.
And other things that the county, that the county might provide for us. So my, my point is, there's no solu- no ideal solution that's going to suit everybody's needs. And the question is, what compromises are we going to have to make? That will satisfy the greatest number of people and at the, at the most affordable cost.
Okay, were you, you were done, Sidney? Thank, thank you. Um, Peggy, you're next.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh. First of all, I agree that I don't envy you your job and you are doing a terrific job, especially with this meeting tonight. Um, so that uh, people can uh, speak up. And um, I would like to see in the future the estimates, you know, specific estimates for pool renovations. So far, I've heard on several occasions that it's so expensive. It's too much, but I really haven't seen. Any estimates. Um, and I do see and I agree with the strength of our township. Over and over, we're hearing um, how important these neighborhoods are, that each of our neighborhoods is very unique. I'm in Melrose Park, Elkins Park. We're very unique compared to Glen Side. I enjoy that part of the township as well. that part of the township as well. And I also enjoy heading toward Cheltenham Village. I'm a huge user, as is my husband, of the Cheltenham Center for the Arts, which by the way, if other township residents in other areas don't know, this is actually a regionally important art center in a lot of respects to artists that are even outside the township that come in. So I think we're hearing a consistency of people really interested in having these neighborhoods and these facilities, you just have some idea of how can we maintain them and, and, you know, and, and the cost of renovation. The other point that I, I did want to address is I, I agree with the last speaker that yes, when you have multiple facilities, there's no question that the maintenance for additional facilities, you have the insurance costs, which of course are going up. But I think that we're hearing that those that pay taxes are interested in kind of working through, how can we possibly do that? And also with the pool thing, in terms of, we do have the, we used to have, I believe, more adult programs to go through the twelve months through the Cheltenham High School pool. I don't know if that's feasible or not. To, I don't know what's going on with that. I'm a big user of Conklin Pool. And you know, just I have observed how, what a positive influence it is for all age groups at Conklin Pool. And I've been to Glen Side as well and I see the strength of what Glen Side Pool offers to everyone. It is more walkable and on the walkability issue, I applaud the commissioners for their ongoing efforts for opening up the newer paths that are connecting from High School Road. Yeah, so that's it. I've said enough.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Steve Burns.
Hi, I'm a forty-five year resident of, of Windcoat. And I spent daytimes for sixteen years in the township building. As the finance officer, I know what shape the building and other facilities are in. I have a few sort of disparate comments. I thought the tax presentation was pretty glib and likely buried the real tax effect of the proposals. Only focusing on the incremental tax effect of the proposals does not accurately reflect what the real effect is on the total taxes paid by residents, including township, county and school. Also, I think we're in this position because the township has failed to maintain existing facilities over the years. We haven't adequately budgeted to maintain facilities. When I was finance officer, the most employees we had doing maintenance was three. In portions of my time, the township was down to one employee doing maintenance on buildings. That's why we're in the position we're in. Spending millions for new facilities without substantially increasing the maintenance budget will result in expensive repairs for new buildings in the future. I think we understate the true cost of these proposals by not accurately reflecting what would be needed to maintain new facilities. I also have substantial doubt that the township staff, which is very lean, can manage extensive construction programs. I think we found out during the sewer program that the township just didn't have adequate staff to manage multi-billion dollar programs. And I fear that we would get, we would be in the same position if you adopt a comprehensive, you know, hundred million dollar program to build new facilities. With respect to the pools, I spent a lot of time with the Conklin Pool in the summer, as Commissioner Ziegman felt knows and, and, and Earth. It's a great community there. I think we need to make sure we keep that facility. We can walk to Glen Side, which is also a great facility when we had little kids. If you decide to go with centralized pools, won't you still need to do extensive repairs on the existing pools until the new pools would be ready? And are any of those costs included in your estimates? I get it. I, I think you need to adequately budget for maintenance of new facilities and include that in the cost. And I don't think you've done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Missy Ryan.
Montserrat. Thank you. Hi, um, thank you for allowing us to, to speak tonight as a community. Myself, I grew up in Cheltenham. My family's been here for forty-five years. My parents raised us here. And I chose to raise my family here. Uprooted my husband from Jenkentown to come over here because of all the amenities that Cheltenham has to offer. I said, Jenkentown doesn't have a pool, we can't live there. We've been here for my whole life. I was a member of the pool growing up. I was a guard. When, you know, I passed that rite of passage into, when I turned sixteen and then I was a swim coach for a year and worked the swim team, the swimming pools at the, at the Cheltenham High School. I was a guard there and also was a manager there one, one winter. It's, it's such a passion of my family. The one I'm raising now and the one that I came from. My parents are very big in the, in the community. They also were very involved in the, the swim team at Glen Side. My mom was the, the president of the swim team from the Liberty Swim League, for that matter. My dad was the starter. My parents run the Fourth of July program in the Renninger Field every year. Our family runs that. This, the, the township is such a passion of those of us who really live here and function day to day. Being able to get to the library, which my daughter goes to with her friend every week. And being able to, you know, both my children and, are, you know, my closest friends in this neighbor, neighborhood. Their kids, they all, we all go together to the pool. It's a great experience for them. Otherwise, they'll be sitting in the house playing video games because it's too hot out. I mean, this is really important to our community that, and I, and I, I don't speak only on terms of Glen Side. I'm, I'm sure Conklin has this same experience in maybe not everyone in every side of the township. But these experiences on, on opposite ends of the township where we can be you know, our own little communities in a big township. I did spend time working at Conklin Pool. I was pulled over there. There is a community there as well. We, we don't want to lose this. And from what I'm understanding, it, it sounds like it would be cheaper to maintain what we have than pull together some big monstrosity that, that really isn't convenient for the majority. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Oh, you still had time, Peter. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call upon, you don't have your name there. I, it says iPhone.
Oh, is that me?
That's you, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's not up. Viviana Calabria.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we've been here for about a dozen years and the position that Amen is, is one that is not unique. I, it's an expensive place to live considering the size of my house. And I'm in a position where I can either move to a larger place nor quite afford to renovate my place. And what keeps me here is the investment of my kids and their friends and our ability to walk around and enjoy our community. With that being pulled out from under us, it's going to be very hard to enjoy living here. I have really put my time in as a parent in the schools, as a member of our community. I pitch in. Our neighborhood is very close and we really care for each other. Are, it seems like, you know, your neighbor's child is your child. We look out for each other's families at the pool. We enjoy dinners there together. We, it, it's, it's a community place for not only the kids, but for all of the families, for people who are families of adults only. It's a really lovely, what they call third place these days that is safe and dependable. We all look forward to it. I would really be very grouchy to have increased taxes and, and a less likable community. We love it here. We love to see it improved. Certainly, the pool needs improvement. And I know it's not as exciting to fix things as it is to make shiny new things. But I think the improvements would be worth the investment. I know you'd have so many grateful citizens here. I don't know, that's just the way I feel about it. And I think, I just think Wal Park's going to be a mess. The traffic's terrible. I don't, I don't see how that's, that's a really reasonable solution. You know, if there was something that was going to come with increased safety and ways to get there and that sort of thing, like i- i- it's sort of like a, a multi-headed beast to dig up Wal Park and, and turn it into this big thing that nobody's asking for. What we're asking for is improve our existing community. And that's all. Thank you very much.
You didn't mention what part of the township you're from. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm in the part of, I'm in Glen Side.
Okay. I was going to guess.
Yeah, I'm in the neighborhood behind the post office.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Bowers.
Hi. For those who don't know me, the commissioners definitely do know me. They know that I'm one of the biggest supporters of Cheltenham. Just to, I live in Glen Side. I've been a resident here for over fifty-four years. I raised my three children here. I graduated from Cheltenham. My three children graduated from Cheltenham and they all still live in the area. Actually, I still live in the home I grew up in. So one of the biggest things, and so I've been all over the township over all these years. I've been at Conklin, I've been at the Arts Center, I've been, so it is important. I hope the commissioners have really listened. That it is very important that we maintain our Cheltenham charm. That we maintain what the residents want, not what you may have already decided. I'm not sure what the urgency is here on voting, but there is more to it. There's questions we didn't bring up that I want to, you know, want to ask, but will ask separately. I have insurance questions. Were they factored in? The buildings? So, but I, I just hope the commissioners really listen because what I heard definitely is for me is one of the biggest reasons I'm still here. And I will still remain a supporter to make sure that people like we have in our community stay and that we're able to attract families. So you would do yourself a big disservice. I'll give you a background. I was one that proposed all the baby pools at Conklin and Glen Side over twenty-some years ago. For those who haven't been here, they were a mess. But we did the right things and renovated them and those have enjoyed them for over twenty-some years. So I just hope as commissioners, that you think if you have a decision you thought you already had, that you rethink it and think it over. And people have many questions. And I do believe we should have an in-person meeting. I really do believe that we could go to the Little Theater. We could use one of our school district buildings because I'm not sure why in the process of having so much trouble doing basketball, this, that. We have beautiful school buildings our children in every day. So we need to go to the school board all, well, right now we've dwindled by a hundred and some and ask them why we're not collaborating and working together. It's all our tax money in both pots. So that's all I have to say and I hope you really think it over, the people who are making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Dan, George, you're next.
I want to thank everybody that's been working on this. I know it's a monumental task. And you don't get a lot of thanks for it and I'm sorry that that's the case, but my biggest concern, and I've listened to everybody here and share a lot of the, the thoughts that people have expressed. But my biggest concern frankly is that I don't really hear a common vision that we're trying to achieve. And so it's difficult for me to discern and a set of options together collectively or parcelled out as to being more or better or less beneficial in the long run. And I, I really feel that there needs to be more development of that. So that at least there's a generalist sense of where we're headed as a community, both in parts and together. I don't believe that we are well enough staffed within the municipality to handle the immensity of this. Nor to go after funding that may not have been sought after, partly because you may not have the staff or the people capable of focusing on it. I'm also not confident that we have done what we need to do in our own house before we take on any of these projects. Particularly with coordination with the school district. That seems to be a lagging problem and chronic problem. Yes, it takes two to tango, but you know, one of them has to ask to dance. And the other part I would, I would add is there are certain things in these concepts that are truisms regardless of which one you pick. Some things need to be central. Police need to be in the center of the town. EMS needs to be in the center of the town. These things have to get distributed in all directions equally. And they got to be where traffic is not preventing them from getting out of where the dispatch from. So I don't know how, to what extent those ideas or requirements are part of the components of these options. Finally, I would really like to have the opportunity to see that slide deck that we were presented with at the beginning. So I have a better opportunity to really identify how I really feel about the monies and where they're being proposed to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. As I stated before, that slide presentation at the beginning will be made available if it's not already on the website. I'm looking for any other questions and, and frankly, I, I want to compliment everyone who gave their opinions and thoughts for keeping them concise. So that frankly, we, we heard from a tremendous number of people. And yet we didn't go past midnight tonight. So that's, that's helpful. At this point, I'm going to ask Allison Elliott. You said you had a couple of comments you wish to make.
Sure, I just wanted to follow up on a few common themes, just kind of procedurally or just not procedural, but just to follow up. I think Dan and George asked the, the question about the, the slide deck. So that's one of the things I wanted to follow up on. It is post, currently posted on our township website. So along with all the other video and presentations that have preceded this one. So if you haven't seen anything before tonight, you can go back and see a lot more of the history and more of the detail. Also, the, the report completed by our, our architects on this, which shows a lot of detail about the cost of renovating each of the facilities and how that compares to the concept plans is also included in that final report as well. There have been questions about kind of renovating the pools and other facilities. One thing I, I do want to be clear. We've done this in other meetings, but tonight as well. A, a number of our facilities, the pools being probably the biggest concern, are at a point where they can't just be renovated. They need to be completely replaced. So there is a lot of work that needs to go into all of these facilities. And that's why this is a very, very big project. Your tax dollars will be affected no matter what, unfortunately, in order to keep these facilities operating for the township. There were other uh questions and comments about kind of um the facilities that we were proposing for divestment. What would that add if we were to um renovate and um keep those in operation? So without the operation, the renovation cost would probably add another fifteen to seventeen million dollars onto that cost. So uh if you're looking at the low end, you're you're pretty much bumping it up to kind of the the higher end of the the cost estimates as well. So um, I think that is it. Oh, um, concerns and questions about grants. So which also kind of feeds in a little bit to why this this project is proceeding fairly quickly is um we intend to go after grants for this to help reduce the costs and the impact on the tax dollars, along with the using the the divested money to reduce the overall cost. Um, grants are very competitive and timing is also very important, but one of the most important things about applying for a grant is having a concept plan, having approval of the community and having approval of the Board of Commissioners before we can apply for grants. That's very, very important. If we aren't I I don't know if you've heard, probably heard the term shovel-ready. Um, we are not competitive and we are are not close to shovel-ready at this point, so um, there is a significant amount of grant money available um that has not been available in the past and may never be available again. So we are looking as best as we can to take advantage of some of these grant sources um while they're still here. Um, so I just wanted to to jump in on that and just kind of fill those sources. And I see there's a few more questions and comments, Dan. I don't know if you want to continue with them.
Uh, I think we're just going to take uh the last two questions. That's not going to be the end of the meeting. There's going to be uh then some uh commissioner discussion. Um, but Jerry Brown, you have a comment or question?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, representing uh, I'm a Lamont resident, Lamont Citizens United. And um, I've just been listening to everybody, and first of all, I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work. You have a tough job, you know, but it's a but you gotta do it. And it's my hope that uh Lamont is want to be up on the list for getting renovations and repairs done whenever the final uh say is done, uh because we do believe that preserving the past secures the future for our community and our children, and that is part of our mission statement. And I also, I'm reaching out to all the other townships, uh Glen Side, Windcoat, Elkins Park, Melrose. Everyone is in need of something, and I hope you just get a little something of what you deserve, because these residents have been living in these communities for so long. And it's only fair that everybody gets a little piece of the action. But in the meantime, I'm a Lamont resident. I've been in Lamont for thirty-eight years. Uh, I have a lot of backup over here. I have a team over here, and we try to work hard to get things done. And I hope it just continues because we would love to have our center open. So uh, we get catered to our children and our elderly who are over in this area. So I thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Jerry. I thought there was somebody else but Myers?
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, so just based on the the latest feedback from from the speaker, the presenter, uh, what is the cost or estimated cost of replacing the pool? So as stated, the the pools cannot be refurbished. So what does it cost to replace them? I don't expect you to have that answer now, but that would be important to know going forward. Second question. Where do we go from here? What do we expect from you guys? When will we hear from you again? What's the next step moving forward? Thank you.
Uh, okay, last comment or question, Tom. Uh, Tom?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, sorry, my uh video is not working. Um, briefly, there's an old uh part of Murphy's Law that says whatever they're talking about, they're talking about money. But anyway, um, I want to say the concept of consolidation has been a thing, and it's a thing in politics and in the corporate world. But consolidation of human activity in our neighborhoods is is another matter, or diversity of locale is power. In communities like Lamont and these other locations, consolidation in essence, when you boil it down, is is a cultural emotion. We're taking away from people. The purpose of local is to have opportunities in safe proximity. And this enforces the concept that in your neighborhood, your friends, the people who are nearby, and the opportunities there are all extensions of your of your home where you live. So I would certainly ask, having heard all these comments tonight, that we don't give or force people what they don't want, whether it's you know, taking down a hundred and eighty trees, or whether it's um eliminating the historical identity, the the historical identity in our daily living. Thanks a lot.
Uh, thank you, Tom. So uh, again, uh, very helpful comments. Um, we are listening to the comments. I'm going to restate um that no decision has been made. We absolutely do not have an agreed-upon path going forward at this time. Uh, I I have some uh other comments, but I think I'm going to uh call upon uh our Vice President of the Board and see if he would like to uh make any comments. Matt Arman?
Uh, thank you, President Norris. Uh, and and thanks for thanks for putting me in the hot seat to go first.
I thought you could handle it.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so uh, I I I want to thank everybody who uh spoke out today. I thought the um comments were helpful. Um, they were uh informative, certainly for me. Uh, they uh, I I appreciate they were all respectful um because I know there's a lot of emotion and uh um strong feelings about everything that's going on here. Um, and frankly, I share them w- with you. Um, so to to um to to my friends and neighbors in Glen Side and throughout the township, uh, I share um your excitement and your apprehension about the future of our township and these facilities. Um, I share the frustration that we're in this situation uh m- more than you know um uh be because of neglect over time, and I and I echo the the comments made about um having to ensure that maintenance uh is a continued uh a focus as we go forward in whatever decision w- we ultimately make. A- and uh to 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 the residents, I'm honored that you um have shared with me your uh uh sort of hopes and desires for the future uh in uh wh- whether it's uh regardless of what it is, whether it's focusing on the arts, whether it's focusing on the pools. Um, I I I really appreciate the conversations that that I've had uh wi- with with all of you and and hearing it today. Um, to to the staff and consultants who um have really put in a ton of work uh into this project uh over the course of, um, and it hasn't, you know, in fairness, it hasn't just been rushed the last couple of months. It's been several months, oh, uh, uh, almost two, a year and a half um of time and effort that's been put into this focus. Um, and to 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 those folks, I say thank you, uh, and also you you know, sort of please stay with us as we um apparently Cheltenham GOP doesn't like the length of my comments, but um I'm not limited to three minutes, so sorry. Um, the the um uh, the the efforts that have been put forth by staff is really um uh amazing, the feedback and th- their vision for the township, the the services that they want to provide. And and deliver in a first-tier fashion for the residences uh i- is really commendable. I want to thank them and also ask them to sort of keep staying with us as we endeavor uh uh a- as we endeavor along this uh daunting effort. Um, to to, and I I'm getting to a point. Um, to to my colleagues, I I want to say that uh I am humbled uh by the opportunity to work with uh th- this group uh of very smart and dedicated uh and committed people on what I think is probably one of the most important issues this township has faced in um i- in a long time. Um, a- and certainly during my tenure. And while we may not agree on every single thing, um, I respect everybody's decision and um uh and uh I am reassured that we will ultimately get to a point when uh when we can agree ultimately on something uh going forward. It may not be tonight, uh, but but I do think that we'll we will get there. I- in terms of my views on this, uh I I I'm sort of driven by a a few uh s- sort of principles here. Um, uh, I think it's important for us to balance the um the the tension or the or the the weight between efficient uh and accessible uh buildings that serve all of our community and allow staff to provide uh me, you know, first-tier community and municipal services while also maintaining uh the neighborhood character that comes with local walkable destinations. Um, as many of you have said, the the reason you moved to Cheltenham uh a- and and in particular, uh Glen Side uh i- in Ward One um is because of that walkability, and I think um that is an important piece of the character of our community that um uh tha- that needs to be uh preserved. I am also um very, very concerned and attuned to the uh cost to taxpayers for the construction maintenance uh um of these facilities, whether they are remain in place uh in some respects, whether they are centralized. Um, th- there is going to be a cost that there th- th- there is going to be a cost no matter what, and it's going to be a lot. Um, and we have to figure out, um, and and some of the questions about funding and whether it needs to be all tax money. Um, I I assure you that uh my colleagues and I are um are shaking every tree, uh are looking for every dollar that um that we can in order to uh minimize the impact on the taxpayers. And that is uh that is something that every every one of us and everyone in staff uh has been focused on. Uh, so tha- that is um, that that is critical. Um, and then the last principle that's sort of been driving my thought process about this is um that doing nothing is not an option. Uh, w- we cannot sustain uh the current status for much longer. The pools are falling apart, our libraries are falling apart. Uh, we we require deliberate um and relatively prompt action uh tha- that must be based upon full information, uh which again may not be adequate a- at the at this point. Um, so um, I I, in my view, um, some combination of centralization, certainly with the administrative campus, uh perhaps with um some uh community center, library services, uh I think is uh is appropriate. Uh, some level of satellite facility uh um that provides local uh uh, you know, third place, somebody used the term earlier, uh in the um Cheltenham area, in the Lamont air- Cheltenham Village area, in the Lamont area, and in the Glen Side area, I think are critical components. And uh, and I think that um this board requires um more information on how programming can work in in um uh in a centralized versus a non-centralized location. Uh, I think we do need some more information. Uh, and uh, so my my view would be that uh we don't make any decisions tonight. We continue to work, continue to receive feedback. Um, but uh unfortunately, we we are in a position where we do need to we do need to proceed um relatively expeditiously, but I think tonight is not the uh is not the time to do it. And and again, because there's a lot of good feedback and a lot of things that we still have to consider. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Arman. Okay, it's not necessary that every commissioner give their input, but any commissioner who would like to make comments or provide their input to my fellow commissioners, who would like? Anybody want to go next?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Commissioner Rappaport, go ahead.
Well, thanks very much. I also need to add my thanks, not only to all the people who spoke and turned out and wrote uh to the township, but also to all of our staff and consultants uh for all their work and commitments in the process. I have notes that probably have about hundred and fifty details that we need to consider. And and many of them actually point to what I feel very specifically are too many flaws in the consolidated recreational and library campus on Wal Park. And I will get to those in just a moment, but let me point out there was a que- a very specific question about the cost of to build new pools. And that was provided in the two hundred and six-page report that is on our website on page J one, um, which is approximately page a hundred and seventy, if you're looking at it on a computer. The bottom line that we were told in the report to build a new facility for Conklin Pool be between six and eight million and Glen Side Pool between six and eight million. I'm not saying you have to leave those numbers, but that is what the report um informed us. All right, so let me jump into a bunch of the details. They're not going to be as coherent uh as a totally written-out speech. So I'm going to be jumping a little bit. Forgive me, but I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time. We have to get into details. When we're talking about numbers that approach a hundred and fifty million dollars, we have to get into the details, because if there are contradictions, disagreements on what the report on on the conclusions, we have to know what they are. Construction and square feet help determine actual costs. Operating programs help determine costs. The facilities that were uh and programs that were outlined in the recommendations are created and informed by details of the programs that staff gave the consultants and also that the library leadership gave the consultants. And so those details matter, especially when there are gaps in the information, inconsistencies and disagreements. For example, about needs versus wish lists or the likely impact financially, programmatically, and in terms of staffing commitments. Okay? Let me mention that this board often cites the PFM Financial Management Plan of twenty twenty. And part of that plan said we need to stick to our core mission as a way of achieving financial security for the township. So I want to ask regarding the centralization of of the library and the pools uh at Wal Park, how is using tax money to build a central library that includes three D printing and maker spaces and supporting a librarian who specializes in this kind of technology? How is that consistent with the core mission of township government? Wouldn't it be better to invest in public private or for that? Wouldn't it be better to invest in public private or for that to be in the domain of public-private partnerships so that we can invest in more critical services to that meet our cr- taxpayers' actual needs? How is converting one thousand square feet of prime green space in Wall Park turning that into a spin room in a new impermeable community center? How is that consistent with the core mission of township government? Are we really trying to compete with taxpaying businesses in our township like Fitness Nineteen? It is right next door in Elkins Park Square or Life Fitness, which is on Washington Lane and Cheltenham Avenue? And how is devoting another thousand square feet of prime green space from Wall Park into a weight room in our new central impermeable community center, consistent with the core mission of this township? Not only that, but I'm not sure we've really addressed things like you know, if we're if we're talking about a hundred thousand square feet of built space on Riparian Buffer and the creek that goes right through the middle of our township. Have we really addressed the need for stormwater management in these costs that are given to us in this report? And I fear I fear we have some surprises ahead if we went with that model. Also, please consider, and and I think some of the speakers talked to this tonight, what's really more efficient and more sustainable? Three hundred cars of people driving to a centralized library with three specialized librarians driving to three neighborhoods? Or four hundred people driving to one centralized pool with four pool staff driving to two different neighborhoods? We've known for about eight years now that that very popular castle playground at Wall Park has been decaying, that it's at the lifespan of that material. And about eight years ago, volunteers tried to find the funds and they didn't succeed. So I suggest that that is a facility of this township, and the board should be investing maybe yesterday in a new state-of-the-art facility there and invest in all of our outdoor activities at Wall Park, including the skate park and including all those other activities that are there trying to uh make it as as we've been told, have a positive economic impact on Central um Elkins Park. As I say, I have a lot more details that are very pertinent to this decision. And I'm gonna take a little more time to do this now. Bear with me and I appreciate the time. We've been told that we're going to suddenly um have traffic calming, gonna work with Pendot and have traffic calming at church so that the Wa- Wall Park concept really uh can be less intimidating and much safer. To me, that is one sad joke. Anybody who has worked with Pendot or noticed Church Road and Old York Road in the past decade or two knows that we're gonna have to bring a lot more to the table and a lot more to Pendot than we have ever brought before, yeah, that kind of uh improvements. We've also been hearing about the big investment we're gonna make in trails so that all of a sudden trails are going to really get us to the central facility. I don't think that's realistic at all. As somebody else mentioned, and it's in my notes as well, we haven't even accomplished some of the major safety and flood mitigation projects that have been going on for that we had on the books for twenty, more than twenty years. Uh and and I don't s- there are so many urgent priorities. I don't see the bandwidth that we are gonna be able to manage that that project as well. Plus, we still have huge amounts of transportation planning studies that would lie ahead and millions of dollars of work in just that preliminary plan. So those studies are out of the ballpark and and add to those costs. Back to that J one page where I got the information to share earlier. One, page one seventy, and again, this is important. These are major strategic details that help inform us what plans are viable and what what is missing and what is wrong with the way that one is set up. If you look at the top where it talks about what it costs to add program to the Glen Side and Elkins Park Library, we're talking now, look at the delta there, not without any renovation or new building. The range is between eleven million and fourteen million. That is just library programming for those two libraries. That makes no sense. We're supposed to believe that the net cost of library programs to those two branches uh is in that range, and I don't buy that. My tax money shouldn't go to that, and frankly, I'd like to protect you from having that kind of uh tax bill as well. It makes no sense. Another thing that was im- in embedded in the program and was stated in in multiple places is that the library satellite programs according to the library and in the study would be housed in other township buildings. And there would be non-library staff supporting those satellites. So it appears that the central library is more efficient because the costs are allocated back to the township and to those satellite neighborhoods. And here's the fundamental concern with that. If the township really wants the savings and efficiencies of centralization, then really, how much investment do you think is left down the road that they're gonna invest in the satellite sites? Would the township actually annually budget for those satellites for the facilities and for the programs? Consider the tax, the the track record that we have for maintaining facilities. Now, we're told, we'll talk about those details with the citizens later after we decide on our on our main plan, on our vision. We'll talk about what's really going on in those satellites. Well, no, I don't like ignoring those critical details. If we went with the central library at Wall Park, I really worry that we would not put real investment in those sites. I fear the satellite investments, and I'm talking about both the library and the parks and community centers that house the libraries, those investments would dwindle to divestment like everything else. I'm concerned. Well, there there's a lot more, but look at data that is missing, because I've I've looked for it. We don't know the current square footage of the actual size of the current pools or the square footage of the proposed centralized outdoor pool. Is the new outdoor pool twice the size of Conklin and Glen Side? Again, it's critically material to the decision about what cat- what direction we take and what vision we have. We know that the current pool decks amount to about seventeen thousand square feet. But we don't have figures for the proposed new decks on that new pool. The current locker rooms and showers and bathrooms at the current pools adds up to six thousand square feet. The proposed locker rooms, showers and toilets in the new facility, according to the plan, according to to the uh report, they're two thousand square feet. So we're reducing from six thousand to two thousand for both pools and the gym facilities. Unless they're gonna add that later on, that's not in here right now. Now, that makes no sense. It's not computing, and that raises other questions. Is one outdoor pool supposed to be twice the size of the current pools? And is it desirable to put all those bodies from both sides of the township in a smaller place?
It's ten o'clock and this is not gonna get us anywhere.
Well, what it's getting us is, and I'll wrap up, thank you. I have a lot more details because they are there.
We all do, Commissioner, I understand.
Okay, well, I will wrap up in one moment. Um I think what we need to do is look at other models. Um, do we want our staff to be working in safe new buildings? You bet we do. And I don't want to put this plan on the shelf and disregard it. I think there's a lot in here that we can use and go with. We are supporting our staff in many ways, and I think we need to give them better facilities where they can actually do the work. I think we need to prioritize community centers in the neighborhoods, reinvest in our current sites. If you think about what is a better, higher value, well, I can assure you that a higher value is not in splash pads and barbecue pits and pavilions. That is not the way to go with those sites. We need to invest in meaningful facilities for the community that are sustainable, accessible, and that don't try to crunch and social engineer thirty-eight thousand people into one spot. Um, so we have part of a vision there. We don't have it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Uh do I have another commissioner who would like to make some comments?
And I'll quickly weigh in. It's Commissioner Zigmanfeld. First of all, um Commissioner Rappaport, much of what you said is actually relevant and tied into the fact that we're still in a process of trying to prioritize and make decisions. So I I had no intention of bringing closure to your discussions or your contribution overall, but it's ten o'clock uh uh and the fact is that as we learn in many of our meetings, there's a a timeline at which we don't have everybody uh who needs to be part of the process. So thank you. So I want to make sure that there's nothing offensive or personal in in my comment. Um, I want to thank each and every one. Uh there were thirty people who spoke. There are approximately a hundred and seventy-five people online. I want to thank each and every one of you, not just who spoke, but who stayed on for your passion, your commitment, your love of this township and your love and commitment to your neighborhoods. You gave us tremendous input, much of it we haven't had before. And some of it we've had in bits and pieces, but this was a piece of the process, and this is a forum where all your comments, along with the comments that came before, along with the collection of information from groups like the Cheltenham Chamber of Citizens, the Melroth Park Neighbors Association, all those have to be considered and they have to be addressed because your input and passion both reassures me and I think it motivates uh the us to to a tremendous degree. Um what I want to do is share with you just something that I think people need to hear with respect to. There's more to this process than just what you've heard tonight, and I have what I think are critical decision factors that we're gonna have to weigh that include everything we heard tonight, the information that we received, the comments from the public as well as from staff and from our commissioners. We have to establish our priorities, the operational priorities and the community-centric priorities, many of which you've emphasized and re- reinforced tonight. We have to identify the timing from the standpoint of what things are essential and what things are most easily addressed or dealt with, both from a a a construction or renovation standpoint and also from a fiscal standpoint. Many of you expressed concerns about the costs. So we have both financial and quality of life concerns that are associated with those costs. And the first ones that come up are taxes, our debt service, our potential grants, as well as our um divestments. But also, what are the costs, what are in the neighborhoods that are essential functions both present, and this is a fifty-year plan? This is not a plan that's gonna fix things overnight. This is setting the stage for the future, for those of you who have lived here short-term, those of us who have lived here in the fifty-year range, and those of us that are going to come into this township looking for certain quality of life and affordable things that make Cheltenham exactly what each of you described, the character and the nature of it. And then the last piece, but one that, you know, is not as important, and that's the locations. Is the Briar Track, the Wall Park Track, the Tylo Campus, et cetera, are those the appropriate places for us to either maintain or relocate those facilities? And you wa- you mentioned traffic studies, you mentioned fiscal impact. All those are things that have to be attended to. Those are all factors that are gonna have to be considered. So we are not in any way, shape or form to some people's concerns, prepared to make any decisions. We're prepared to continue to take the feedback from both our our experts, from staff, and each and every one of you. Take it seriously and prioritize and be practical and pragmatic in as many ways as we can. And that's the thing I would say, that there's still much more to be decided, and therefore we're still in the midst of the process, not at the tail end. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zigmanfeld. Uh Commissioner Dwight Pedro Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the neighbors for showing up tonight um sharing why you chose Cheltenham and what we must do to keep you here while also sustaining Cheltenham. I've heard a lot of viewpoints tonight. Um, I'm new to this board, but I'm not new to Cheltenham. I chose Cheltenham um for many of the reasons that you chose Cheltenham. I live in Lavrock. Um and I need you to know that from my vantage point, this is just the beginning in terms of us moving forward. Because there's no way we can make a decision with what we heard tonight. We have a lot of work to do. I'm gonna represent your views, and there's nothing that's going to um put me on a fast track to making the wrong decision. Um, I can say without reservation, I am not at this point in support of raising taxes to support majority of this uh project. We need to look at other funding opportunities, and there's plenty of opportunities out there. Um, grants, philanthropy, fundraising, and the like. So as we move forward, please know that I will represent your views and a lot of what I heard tonight is what I've been thinking all along and sharing with my my colleagues. But I do believe that collectively, um we can get this right. It's gonna take some time, and we need to have more dialogue with you and other experts. Again, thank you for your time and for your transparency.
Okay, I'll I'll jump in here and then check in with my other commissioners. Um, I'll I'll be brief with my comments. Uh Commissioner Zigmanfeld pointed out a number of the aspects that still need to be resolved or thought about. Uh so just just a couple of comments or thoughts. Um, I think it important to recognize that there was a large uh that there was apparently a large Glen Side group who provided their feedback tonight. That's not to discount any of the comments, but it is a recognition uh that as a couple of the uh comments stated, they're As a couple of the comments stated, there are about thirty-seven thousand residents in the township. We have to recog, we have to represent all the communities, all the neighborhoods. There's a balance between the individual neighborhoods and serving all township residents. Uh, I, I and my family, we've been in the township for forty-plus years. We lived in uh Elkins Park and then moved over towards the Cheltenham side. My children couldn't or didn't walk to the pool or to the libraries, both of which they attended. Uh, frankly, both of which uh they and we enjoyed very much. Um, they also took classes at the Art Center, uh so we have a fondness for the Art Center. Um, I also want to point out that uh not coming from the commissioners, not coming from township staff or the consultants. The Library Board, which is an independent uh group of citizens and. And a professional who heads up the library system. Uh, they had consultants, they are recommending a central library. So that's coming independently from the Library Board. And and there, uh, they have made a presentation, and that's available online if anyone wishes to see. Uh, their specific presentation. Um, there were a lot of good comments tonight, school district coordination, uh that uh I think we need to improve on. And see what we can do there. So just finishing up uh costs and services and being responsive to the neighborhood needs. Uh, that's our challenge, and that's what we're trying to deal with and to balance. Again, thank you all for coming. Um. I'm just checking to see if any of my, or Commissioner Brockington, sorry.
Yeah, now, when I say I'm gonna be brief, I'm not gonna be Commissioner Ziegmanfeld brief. I, I would really be brief. Um. This is a large elephant, and as they say, when you, and when you have, you eat an elephant, you have to eat it a little bit at a time. And I think right now we're looking at this holistic, we have, we have to look at it holistically. But we have to take little bites. I've heard a lot tonight, um, some that I already knew, some that I didn't know. Um, like Commissioner Lewis, I haven't made a decision. But I will say to the residents here, I I hear you. But I would say to my commissioners, and I think we all agree, we have to make a decision. We cannot kick this can down the road. We have to make a decision for the residents that are here now. We have to make a decision for the residents that are going to be ten, twenty years from now. So I do not want to kick this can down the road. Sometimes the decisions are made, both sides are unhappy, meaning we probably make the right decision then. But I am listening to you, and I thank you for being on this call, and I'm gonna end my comments because I don't want to be too long.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockington. Um, okay. I don't see, uh. I don't see Brad Bransky. Okay, um. Uh, again, despite what might have been thought there, or as stated, there is going to be no vote by the commissioners tonight. We haven't made a decision. Uh, we still have uh work to do as far as discussing this, researching it more, getting some more information. Um, I don't have the answer uh to someone's earlier question. Uh, exactly, um, when, when this will be on the agenda next. Commissioner Armond, did you have any comments you wish to add?
I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Rappaport, and then i- if there's anything else to add, I'll, I'll jump in.
Well, thank you, um. I can just real quickly, I know I I barely got started on my comments, and I suspect my colleagues feel the same way and. May not even want to listen, but I do think it's important that we have continued discussion and that we do get into the details because. As I said before. That's what this is made up of. That's what, how you determine which is the best course. So I I would ask you, and especially because most of us feel. We need a direction and we need to know what to do with the facilities that are currently falling apart. We need to do some investing, we need to understand how to do that wisely so we're not wasting money with more band-aids. So, uh, I do think we need a very quick turnaround about when we're gonna. Keep this discussion going and when we're going to come to a resolution. So, thank you.
Uh, so, so, um. Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. I I I agree. Uh, I think that. We, uh, I agree with Commissioner Rappaport, I can agree with Commissioner Brockington. Uh, I think I said it myself, w- w- doing nothing is not an option. A- and we, um, the can has been kicked down the road, which is why we're here. And um, that being said, w- w- we also can't be rushed, and getting the feedback tonight. Uh, I think helps uh inform going forward, but um, what what I would suggest is this, wh- while. Um, I don't think we're prepared to have a vote on a particular vision, a- as, as I've said, I think we do need a vision going forward. Uh, if tonight's not the night, um. Uh, uh, i- if tonight is not the night we're gonna decide, we, we need to um. Uh, continue to talk to our experts, we need to continue to vet various options, uh and then. Uh, and continue to get the feedback from uh fr- from all of you and and those who are not here. Um, and also, once we decide to have another meeting. Make sure that there's sufficient time for everybody to be prepared and also be able to attend that meeting. As well and as robustly as it was tonight, so um cer- certainly, um. If this is continued, and I think it should be, um, then the um, the public needs to be part of it going forward.
Okay. Uh, I think with that, uh, again, uh, thank you to all who participated, who gave comments and who, and who stayed on till the end to listen.
Dan, Dan, I think you got Brad there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bransky.
I was just looking for the ability to try to comment, because as you know, my uh, my location is a little bit compromised.
Yes, um, sorry, I was looking for.
I just, yeah, it's okay. I just want to tell everybody who's on the meeting. To, when you, when, no matter what side of this you're on, when you consider what the options are, when you consider what appeals to you. Get your feet, get yourself a couple thousand feet up in the air, look at the entire township. And realize that what we're going to do now is for the next thirty, forty and fifty years, not just for the people here. But for the people who will move in, for your children, possibly your grandchildren, and keep that in mind with whatever decisions you make. Thank you.
Okay, with.
Can we, can we please request to have the chat saved? And and read through by?
I, I believe the instruction at the beginning was that when, we're not gonna be utilizing the chat.
Well, the, um, Allison.
The me, the meeting is recorded.
Yeah, I was gonna say, A- Allison, um, i- if the meeting is recorded, does that also record the chat?
There's way too many comments to ignore.
Uh, I'm so, I'm sorry, um, Allison, di- did you hear the question? I didn't hear your answer.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, uh, Myers, um, the, the, the answer is it is recorded. Um, I think we've probably all been monitoring it, e- e- even though we haven't been able to respond to each and every. Comment, but it is recorded, so thank you for pointing that out.
All right, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna move to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving.